October 26th, Board of Supervisor Regular Session.
All right, well, let's go ahead and call this regular meeting of the Marion County Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, Mr. Grandia.
Keisha Johnner, here. Mark Ramey.
Here.
Steve McCollum.
Here.
Very good. Would entertain a motion on this morning's agenda.
I'd like to amend the agenda if I could, please.
Yes, ma'am. What would you like to do?
I would like to switch seven and six, so seven will go before six.
Okay. We've got a motion to amend the agenda, switching items six and seven, making six, seven, and seven, six. Is there a second?
Second.
McCollum?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Very good. Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved.
Second.
McCollum?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Jake, any communications received?
No, sir.
Very good. Fellow Board members?
As a matter of fact, I did have one.
Oh, yes, sir.
But Tyler not here, so, but I'll pass it on anyway. A gentleman that lived on Illinois Drive, west of Highway 14, wanted me to tell them what a good job they did on the transition to these driveway and everything on the, on the road book they did there, so. There we go, I did it.
Awesome.
Very good, thank you. All right, we'll move on. Public comments, this is the portion of our agenda the public can speak on items not listed on this morning's agenda. Board cannot act on those items, but they could be topics for future Board of Supervisor meetings. Are there any public comments on items not listed on this morning's agenda? Renee, anything online? Anything in the room? Seeing none, we will move on. Is there a motion on this morning's consent agenda?
So moved, reapproved, good day, consent agenda.
I'll second.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
All right, on to business. First, we have Resolution 21, uh, 2021 dash 75, and this is to approve naming of the authorized administrator of Marion County Jail. We do this every year. Sheriff?
Yeah, actually, oops, excuse me, step up here, you can all hear me. Um, yeah, we do this every year. Actually, we're doing it a little bit before our January reorganization meeting on it. I've made a change in regards to approving Lieutenant Schuhart is now going to be the jail administrator. Lieutenant Kingery is going to be one of the night lieutenants. Doing this for multiple reasons. It's always kind of nice to have the experience of somebody that's working nights that knows what's going on in the jail. I mean, and also to give other lieutenants experience and the overall, all experience of it. So that's the reason for an operational efficiency side of it. Lieutenant Kingery's been in that position, we were just talking, just over three years, I think, there, three to four years. And Lieutenant Schuhart will do a fabulous job also. So this is just to make that swap and make it official.
All right, very good. Questions? Steve, Keisha, for the sheriff? All right, thank you. Jason, thank you.
And just actually, while I have the mic, this is our position, and I just want to thank Lieutenant Kingery for all his time and effort and everything on it. It's a huge liability for the county and the sheriff's office and different things, and it's an important position. Justin's done a great job on it, as did previous jail administrators. And I know Lieutenant Schuhart will do a fabulous job too, so thank you for that, and thanks for stepping up to the plate.
Absolutely, thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate it very much, all that you do in Marion County.
Thank you, Justin, and best of luck, Andrew.
Very good. Is there a motion on Resolution 2021 dash 75?
Yeah, I motion to approve Resolution 2021 dash 75.
Second.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Gentlemen, thank you very much. Next, weed commissioner. Weed commissioner report.
So Phil was talking about coming, but he had some outside situations that may have affected that, so I think.
Steve, or no, is that anybody?
Phil Grunendike is our acting commissioner, and Randy Tredders does a ton of work for him as well at the secondary road department. So in essence, what we have is an annual report here, if you don't mind me just kind of filling in why it's here.
Yeah, that's fine.
It's this time of year, I think this report has to be filed like by the end of this month. So those two get, got together, turned in their reports, and just when Phil was in the office turning this stuff in, he said it was a very quiet year. He didn't want to jinx anybody or anything on that, but from a standpoint of calls and complaints, it had been quite quiet for this year. So he fills out his, I don't know if there's a page two or not, I can't remember.
Yes.
So this is the report that will be submitted up to the state. If you guys basically approve it, it kind of talks about what he's done. He also, I think in your packet, gave just a small little paragraph of overview of what they're doing. And then the next item.
Do you know, is that, is that within budget right there? How much we're spending on herbicide? That's $36,000. Am I reading that right?
Yes, it is, and I guess I don't specifically know budget, I'm not aware.
That's not the weed, that's not the budget for the weed commissioner, that's the county, the whole county.
Probably the IR, the IRM portion probably.
Okay, okay, very good, thanks, Steve, appreciate it.
Weed commissioner gets a monthly allotment for being ready and available to do that.
Sure.
A lot of this does work through, secondary road department works very close with these, taking care of these weeds and stuff as well, so I would imagine there's part of that as well.
Jake, do we need to, on the front form, it has the dates of 2020. I know that, you know, you pressed there, do we need to make a adjustment there?
Well, I think it is, if you go back to that page. Phil just changed it, I think when they were out working, trying to get that. But this was what was available online, that's really the 2021 report. So to my understanding, when they were trying to pull this off.
He made, he made the amendment, he made, he made the amendment.
He made the amendment, yeah.
Right, he did, yeah. I just didn't know if it, the dates.
Yeah, he's trying to present his 2021 action. And then what's kind of confusing is the next item on the agenda is actually kind of appointing it for 2022, the next round.
Right.
So that's my understanding of how that, how that flows.
Appreciate it.
I think Brian helped him in trying to get these to come off correctly.
Appreciate it. Questions, board?
No.
No, something's not working.
Just need to file this.
Yeah, I would just.
Motion received, received.
And we can send it off.
Yeah. Is there a motion to receive the weed commissioner report for 2021?
Still moved.
Second.
McCollum?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Now we have 2022 weed commissioner certification.
So this generally goes in at the same time, over the last few years. Phil's done a pretty good job of keeping it all in line with the timeframe, so unless you guys had a different direction or something you wanted to go, this would basically, I believe at the top there, it's kind of a dual effort.
Right. You still want to do it?
Designating.
Yeah.
Anybody? I assume he still wants to do it.
Steve wants to be the weed commissioner. There is, as we've discussed in the past, again, I don't know all the details, but it has gotten a lot more detailed than I believe the requirements and things like that are involved, are more than there used to be.
It's just a formality.
Yeah.
It's an appointment, I would assume that if you guys ever would want to change mid-year, there would be no reason why you couldn't change it.
Yeah. Is there a motion on the certification of the weed commissioner? Make sure I say it correct.
Yeah. So we would probably, I'm sorry if.
No, it's all right.
In the past, sometimes this appointment would be on the annual meeting as well.
Yeah.
So that probably wouldn't show up on the annual meeting, this would take care of that for 2022.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
I'll make that motion. That, is it Phil Grundike?
Yeah, Phil Grundike.
Yep. As the weed commissioner for 2022.
Second.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
I'm just surprised we get through that one without any cheap jokes. Right, Sheriff?
That's right. I'll pass.
We'll pass on that, right? All right, all right. Now it's a political issue now. I don't know if you like it. All right, we've got item number four, which is a Class E liquor license renewal for New Star, but we have not received any from Environmental Health yet.
Yeah, so if you don't mind, I guess I'll step in on this one too.
It's like your meeting.
I left the office saying I don't think I really have anything in this meeting. So this was a, just a, we got received word from alcoholic beverages that New Star had fulfilled all the administrative requirements, at least through the alcoholic beverages, and through any of the paperwork that we needed in our office. When I sent out the email to everybody that kind of touches in the county departments, any of the alcohol permits or any of those types of things. Bridget from Environmental Health responded, I believe this was, they were delinquent in there. If I remember right, there's an annual fee for having a mechanical.
Right.
Septic, they're behind, they're, they're delinquent in that payment.
Okay.
So she emailed me this morning and said, she had reached out to them last week and hasn't, haven't heard back yet, so I guess it would be requested to just not take action on this item this time, and it will, you'll probably see it in the next meeting.
When, when does the, I should look at this, when does the license expire? Do we know?
They're pretty, they're ahead pretty good. It looks like there's an effective date of December 15th, so.
So they have to get that fee paid up through December 15th. If we don't renew, then that puts a burden on Jason and his group to check this out, right?
Which I have no problem with that.
Okay. Okay, very good. Now go ahead, Jason.
So this is one of those places, depending on who's managing it, we've had issues in the past with this. It's kind of, they get back up to speed or whatever, and then they kind of change management or different things, and then we have complaints about selling to underage and different things along those lines, so. I have no problem visiting them and discussing multiple different issues if that comes to that point.
Okay. Okay, very good, appreciate it, Jason, thank you. So we'll take no action for now, so we'll close discussion on this item, wait for Bridget's, the acknowledgement of the payment for the mechanical inspection. I assume that's what it's for.
Yeah, I'm assuming that this is just like.
Or certification, that it's up, that it's up to date.
That all of the local ordinances need to be in place. At least that's what I remember from the last alcoholic beverages, it was waiting on a septic system or something.
Okay, good. So we'll close, we'll make this an item on our next one and see where we're at.
I'll keep an eye on that, yes.
Perfect, very good. Is there a motion to close discussion on item four?
Make motion to close discussion.
Second.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye, very good. Next, we have an item authorizing the IT department to enforce multi-factor authentication. Now, Andrew, that sounds like, that sounds really oppressive to me, but I know you want to initiate it, right? Or start it, or do we, we don't, because we don't do this now, right?
We do it a little bit right now voluntarily, but this would be a initiative to turn it on basically countywide.
Okay.
So this is a cybersecurity kind of initiative. It is appropriate, I think, to talk about this in October, since October is Cyber Security Awareness Month, if you didn't know that.
Well.
But multi-factor authentication, if you're not aware, and I'll kind of explain what it is, is something that most of you are probably already doing to some degree right now. And it would be turning it on for our county services as well. So what multi-factor authentication means is, basically, it's an additional method of logging into your accounts, whether they're computer accounts, email accounts, different applications. So right now, an example would be you log into email, you type your username in, you type your password in, and you're in. Multi-factor authentication, if we would enable that, asks for another authentication method. So that method might be a token, where you have a time-based token, where you press the button and it gives you a code. So you type your username and password, and then you type that code in. It might be a text message that gets sent to you, your phone, and then it has a code on it. And you type that code in after your password. It might be an application on your cell phone where it pops a message up and says, was this you? Trying to sign in, and you hit yes. Those, there's several different methods. We can also use a desk phone where it calls your, your desk and asks you if it was you, and you hit a button on your phone saying yes. So.
So what's the time, what's the timeframe of this?
I don't have a specific.
No, I mean, if you, this were to go into effect, would, this should be like for a 24-hour period, or 12-hour period, or?
It's going to kind of depend on the use case.
I mean, you don't have to do it every email, right?
No, no, that's a good question, Steve. It's going to depend on the use case and the department and the function. And so I said where possible on this agenda item, because there's even going to be some applications that don't currently support MFA. But we're going to try to turn it on where we possibly can, and we're going to try to make it as unobtrusive as possible while still protecting us from bad actors, right? So unobtrusive as possible, things like.
I can't even remember my password.
Yeah, yeah, so. We're going to, we're going to push, we're going to push for the easiest possible scenario, which is an application on your phone. Some folks, you know, if they don't want to put the application on their personal cell phone, I understand that, maybe there's a concern there, then we will give them another alternative option. The easiest option is you put the app on your cell phone. When you try to log in from off-site, it will pop a message saying, was this you? And it might do that once a day, it might do it once, once a week, might do it once a month, depending on how often we set it up to do that.
Is this what we went through with my stuff earlier, my phone and my iPad?
We've turned it on for several folks. I'm not going to say who will turn it on in a public meeting, but we've turned it on for some folks for, for various reasons. And so it's already running in, in place in, in areas in the county. And we're, we're just wanting to expand that now, to turn it on to, for everyone. And when, when you think about it, if you're, if you're a bad actor and you get somebody's password, and they don't have MFA turned on, it's pretty hard, it's pretty easy to figure out their username, right? It's, it's posted everywhere on, on various things. So once they have your username and password, they're pretty much able to get in. With an MFA, they don't have your cell phone, the bad person doesn't have your, your token or your, your desk phone app. They don't have access to that unless they're physically in our building. So it, it's a pretty big increase in our cybersecurity risk posture, and it's also now being required by a lot of our compliance fee, and also it was a question on our cyber insurance, are we doing this? And we had to say no, because we aren't at the time. But it is also a thing that's going to be, eventually it's going to be required for everything. It's also, this is extremely common in pretty much most industries in the world now. You log into your bank account, you have to have it on right now. You log into various secure sites, you pretty well need to have MFA turned on nowadays.
Questions for Andrew? And as far as the, the way we do it, Andrew, I mean, like I've got, you've got Microsoft Authenticator, you've got Google Authenticator, you can use those, you can.
There's, there is different.
Is there, is there a danger depending, I mean, are we going to have a uniform way of doing it, or are we going to have it different for different areas?
We are trying, we are trying to do a fully unified product. We are looking at three different products to do this. We have not purchased them. They are in my budget to do it. So we have not picked the product yet. I have three different ones we're looking at, and if you want to talk about what those are, I can do that offline. But we are looking at three different products right now, and all of them work very similarly to what you currently have with your Microsoft Authenticator for your email.
Okay, very good.
So you're saying sooner or later it's going to be a requirement?
It's going to, it, it already is on some, some things. There's new SOS rules coming out that require it for the Secretary of State. There are CGS requirements already for law enforcement in place, and we're doing some things to kind of get around, or not get around, but adhere to those policies. But this, this really takes us to that next step of just not really having to worry about exceptions to rules and things like that.
I agree. Federal government, I deal with them, I have to do it.
Yeah, it's, it's. It's state, it's federal, it's in our insurance, it's.
Financial services.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's pretty well everywhere.
Yep. No, I appreciate you bringing it up.
Any discussion, this, this is pretty matter of course, when you're talking about cybersecurity and the next level of thing is when, what's after that, right?
Right.
Because it will always evolve to whatever that next thing is.
Yeah, it's always, cybersecurity is always a cat and mouse game.
Yep, yep.
We know you love it, Steve.
That's okay, I'm the same password guy. I got a text him all the time saying, oh, my password is up, give me a new one. So.
Glad you're around to help me.
We make it as easy as we can, but you know.
We'll help you, Steve.
Still have to try to lock the door once in a while.
All right, very good. If there are no other questions for Andrew, is there a motion to authorize IT to proceed with multi-factor authentication?
Still moved.
Second.
McCollum?
Hacker. Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thanks, Andrew, yeah. On to new item number six, VA update. Mr. Nestebie.
Well, as everybody probably experienced, West Pleasant was closed for the bulk of last week. So the underground tunnel system going from north campus to south campus has been removed, and the road has been hatched back in. Good thing we did it, that tunnel was in pretty poor shape, so that's really the biggest update at this point. If you've had a chance to drive by on West Pleasant, now that the road's open, you'll notice 27 is getting closer to being completely gone foundation-wise. 28 has been completely gutted, it's gone entirely. I'm trying to think if there's anything else new, other than the fact that we've got a ton of mud out there right now. So you guys have any questions?
Yeah, I just have a question. On that tunnel, was that a full tunnel, like you could walk through that tunnel?
No, it was about five foot deep, six feet wide.
Okay, so it was for infrastructure type?
Yeah, so it's a, it ran from the boiler plant, because that's how they steam heat.
Okay.
For the south side of the campus, or, yeah, the south side of the campus. So officers' quarters, old nurses' quarters, that all ran off the main campus boiler plant. So that was just their means of getting it over there, basically a chase going across the road.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Yeah, anything else? Steve?
No.
All right, very good.
Perfect.
Chris, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Appreciate it. Project is proceeding. Very good. New item, number seven. Oh, let's close discussion on this VA project one.
Motion to close discussion on the VA project.
Second.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Okay, very good. New item number seven is a discussion, the American Rescue Plan. I guess I'll kick this off, since I was going to blame Renee and say she did it all. She just had to listen to me type down numbers and do that. What you have on your screen, and what I sent to the group that was part of the discussion, is a draft, I'm trying to figure out which one I should look at to get the best of, I'll look at this one. Without being too specific, these categories are categories that I created, as we kind of worked through looking at the different lists of recommended projects, what we can spend the money on, vis a vis the regulations associated with ARPA as we understand them. Been a lot of talk, and a lot of different chats about how this money can be divvied up and spent. I don't think anybody has a real good feel for it, I'll just start off with that. I think everybody's trying to figure out what the rules and regs will be. My framework for this is, there are provisions within ARPA that are called clawback provisions, which means that the government can come back if we don't fit within certain compliance guidelines and ask for the money back. So as an old legal compliance guy, and then talking with the different groups that we've had discussions on about how to spend this money, that's my starting point. I want to make sure that the money fits within buckets that we can defend in a program that we will draft, that Michaela, Jake, and I will certify to, because that's what will happen as we go through this process. I'm going to walk through the categories real quick, and then we can have discussion, and this, we've got some of our electeds in here, so it's good, we can just, we can talk about that. Conservation, Steve had a list, and then sent some revisions out, so Steve, those are the top three that I picked. If you tell me that those aren't the top three, or you want five, or whatever, we can sure talk about that. The EMA was just, there were, I think there were three items or four items on Jeff's list. This is the one I kind of came to, is maybe having some clickability. I have no idea. I just picked one of the three. The other one was towers and things like that. I said, we're not, we're not doing towers, not doing that kind of stuff. So we can talk about that one, is, is that appropriate? Do we need to spend that? For the facilities project, Chris, you had some items listed out. I know in talking with various electeds, these are the three that I landed on. I know, Jason, we talked about the LA, the LEC and need for upgrade along these two categories. Courthouse, HVAC, Chris, that's still one, correct? And then public health, we've got HVAC, roofing, and parking lot upgrades that, that need, need to get done, so. Human resources, it's just a category. This category really, under ARPA, we can do some premium pay for people that worked additional hours, did additional things as a result of COVID. So think of this as bonus money.
As a county, on a county-wide basis, that, that's the money that we're looking at.
This is for people who did things during, so beyond a county-wide base.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not giving Lisa a $25,000 salary increase.
Oh, jeez, no.
Whoever, whoever read it that way needs to take a step back.
We could amend that.
You want to amend that? Disaster recovery, IT, Andrew, we talked about this a little bit, need for maybe updating some disaster recovery and what the cost of that might be. So, and then road department, Tyler, we talked about our fuel project, and some of the costs associated with fuel project, with Fuel Master. And I hope I read your, your presentation correctly and got those numbers accurately represented in there. And then the 3014 project is really an update of this building that we're sitting in right now. As you know, the Board of Supervisors has been very active, especially during my time on the board, but including Steve and Keisha, in disposing of properties. Well, we have two other properties we want to try to dispose of, yet. We've got the Annex Building, and we're, we're in discussions about the Memorial Hall of Town. And if we don't need those anymore, or if there are different ways we can still meet the statutory requirements of having a memorial hall, but yet get that building into effective use for the city of Knoxville, those are some options we have to continue to eliminate our ownership of certain things, but yet, and then refocus those energies other places. This building needs an update. It's not even a close call. We don't have a building in Marion County right now that would withstand an F3, let alone an F5 event, similar to what happened in Marshall County. So that project is something that we've been, I've been talking to Chris about, and how do we make a building that government could still function if we had a catastrophic event occur? Because if you get something like a Marshall Town or Parker's Bird or something like that, it probably takes out most of our ability to really do anything, especially if it hits uptown. So that's what that update is. That number is Kentucky windage. We don't have to nod so agreeably, Chris. I just, after talking with Chris, going through different things, that number probably is lower?
I'm not nodding.
He's not nodding, he's not committing to any of this.
I'm not committing.
So anyway, that number's in there for that. I think we need to do an upgrade along those lines, and have a place where government can still function in that event. Because we just don't have that facility, doesn't exist in Marion County. That gets us to a grand total of 4.78 allotted, which still leaves us about 1.6 of what we think. Jake, did I get our total right at the bottom? Total allocation?
The total of.
Michaela, do you know?
Designation, I believe, I believe so, six point four.
So, two other, two other comments and then we'll open it for discussion, number one, this is money coming from the feds. We're we're talking about property tax equalization and all those things, this doesn't affect your property taxes, alright? So this is money coming from the federal government that has been allotted to states and counties and cities. And that's how much money Marion County is getting in an account, and Michaela and Jake are working on the accounting issues with this. We have till twenty twenty four to have projects in line to spend it. And if we don't spend it by twenty twenty six, it reverts back to the feds. So the money will get spent one way or the other, I just want everybody to understand that. This is not property tax money coming from local property tax revenue, it's coming from the state, still taxpayer money, absolutely. It's coming from other sources, namely income taxes of our grandchildren. I don't wanna get political, alright, there's my opening.
Before we get.
This is a draft, by the way, so discussion.
Before we get any discussions, we we feel fairly confident that at this point in time, that these would meet the ARPA requirements.
Yeah, in fact, I'm probably being a little narrow, Steve, in terms of my reading on things, there are probably things we could broaden out. If we wanted to color a little closer to the edges of ARPA. These are the things I'm pretty confident fit within all the regulations that we've got so far, which we don't have much.
But keeping in the back of our minds, if we color a little bit, that they have they have the opportunity to come back and ask for it back.
That's right, and see, depending on the, it'll, that'll depend on administration, that'll depend on all the, I think some people are taking the view. Spend it on whatever you want, as long as it's kind of close, cause no one's ever gonna come back and ask for the money. I think, I think that's legitimately what some people are doing, saying, nobody will ever ask for his money back.
Well, I'm not comfortable in doing that.
And I'm not either, I am with you on that one. And and to be honest, with the certification process for Jake and Michaela, I don't wanna, I don't wanna have a, I don't wanna have documentation like that. I I think we have to respect the fact that, you know, as much, we may disagree politically. With spend it, with getting printed money, I do, but at the same time, we've got it, it's in an account, we've got half of it in an account already. We're gonna get the other half. We don't even know when, right, it's like end of the year, beginning of next year, something like that.
Half of the six point four.
So, do we have to, in January, do we have to have a project list of saying, this is what we're looking at spending this three million on, or is it very vague?
No.
It's not my, sorry, Mark.
No, I was gonna say, it's, it, this is, we could have two projects, we just have to spend it by.
Yeah, what you said earlier, it has to be encumbered by like twenty twenty four or or and then, and then by twenty twenty six.
The trouble with this whole thing, there's not a black and white definition on what you can spend and what you can't spend.
The reports are quarterly expense reports that my understanding is, and they postpone now because of the rules, if I understand right. Is the interim role final yet? It, is the interim role final?
Yeah.
And they're, they're talking about legislation on different uses of rules as well, but.
So, so like one of the things, if you've seen the new Iowa tourism commercials, that's, that's ARPA money, that's where that's coming from.
I'm not sure how that falls in there, but.
Well, there's a lot of states doing that, and a lot of the state plans, if you read them, are, let me just walk you a little bit through process outside of this. Once we agree, the only advantage for tenant and and the one thing we can do as a board, folks, is this, is you can tentatively. Agree to, these are the projects you want, when we get to it, we can amend, it's not like we've got, these are set in stone. But we're gonna put together a document similar to the state of Iowa, I've asked Renee to start working on a draft. The state of Iowa has an ARPA document out there, it's about what, eight pages, nine pages, that articulates how they're going to utilize this money. And then that document gets approved, but we'll do the same thing, we'll have a document like that, it'll talk about the spending, how it's gonna be spent. It'll come before the board to finalize and we'll, we'll finalize it, so it'll actually be a physical document, that'll be part of your compliance requirements, Michaela and Jake. To have that document for auditors and things of that nature, to say, did you do it according to paragraph one A? So that's what we're working on right now.
Wouldn't it be nice if you get this document together and send it to the feds and they could say yay or nay?
It would be.
Before you spend the money?
That would actually be ideal for something like this, since it is so, there is a lot of vagary out there right now, it actually would be ideal. To be able to check those boxes, and I do think we can call people and ask them and say, hey, we're, we we had talked about bike trails. I know Steve and Tyler were part of meetings, I I don't know who else, can't remember who else was on those meetings, but we talked about the potential for being able to apply some of it. To maybe future economic development projects, after reading through everything, I couldn't get there, Steve, I don't know, did Jamie give you any?
Yeah, there there was a number of, there was a number of counties that looked at it, but they had exactly. There was a number of counties that were looking at trails, but they had the same indication that you had, and they were afraid to pull the trigger on it. Because they don't know if it's gonna qualify, and the federal government might come back and say that doesn't qualify for that, so. Nobody, everybody's thought about it, but nobody's gonna do it, nobody wants to be that first one out of the chute to do it, so.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, Steve, very much.
This is crazy, because if I was to give somebody six million dollars, I sure know what I could tell them to make it spend it.
We we do know from the regs, I mean, generally, this is about. Impacts to our, to county government re- as a result from COVID. High level, okay, the problem we face a little bit, we we just don't have that many. So then, then as you drill down into ARPA and the different things you can do, a lot of it is preparing for whatever that next event is. So I think there's two, there's two broad categories as I read ARPA, and you guys are certainly will will have a discussion on this, this is how I read it. There's a, there are, there's a series of dates, January one through March one, twenty twenty one. Um that certain parts of this encompass like salary and things like that, people that did extra work.
I think that was March, isn't it, doesn't it go back to March?
Actually, it goes, the salary part goes to January, the other part starts in March, actually, I can turn the board around, cause I've got all my notes on the board. But at the, at the same time, you've got all that, COVID stuff, you've also got preparation. For things that maybe you were deficient in, well, during COVID, that you don't have now. So do you have preparation in place for another event, whatever that event is? Don't know, tornado, another breakout, something like that, yeah, Jason, you got a question?
Well, just uh real quick, Chris and the facility side of it, between Justin and Andrew and Chris. On that facility side for the LEC, that, I I'm very, very confident that's going to pass, all aspects of it. Because dealing with inmates in the COVID side of it, or whatever, was a big task.
Well, ventilate, yeah, anything ventilation related, Jason, passes.
Yeah, so.
All those three, all those three projects, I am confident a hundred percent pass.
And the reason I bring that up is um, I actually, Justin and Andrew have been working on quotes. To get that accomplished, so I would ask that, hopefully sooner than later, those areas can be. Um I guess nailed down on, just for the fact that the quotes that they have for the door locking side, but the ventilation or whatever, I mean.
Sure.
Are gonna be. So that's just something that I know, and and what did you guys, do you have the dates on when, or there's thirty day, sixty day, ninety day, or is there?
Chris, you got something on that?
If I'm hearing you right, Sheriff, we're just wanna make sure that that lump sum is gonna cover everything.
Well, no, but I'm just, I just wanna, I would like the Board of Supervisors, not that the list is gonna be approved, but I would like you to approve those. Because of time constraints in regards to the bids for that, like the door locking side.
Most of our bids are gonna be good for thirty days in this environment, I've already had that conversation with Chairman Remy that you need to.
You're asking us to piecemeal approval, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I would, I would just like, those that you would kind of know, hey, this meets it, this is where we're at. Yeah, so I mean, and we may need a, whether it be thirty or sixty days for some of these already. Um there's a couple of them on there for that door locking side of it, for different things that are there, that these guys have already got, we can refresh that. But I just, I'd hate to see it go three months, six months, a year out, or whatever.
The whole point of having this conversation, Jason, is so we can get a broad project list approved.
Okay.
I'm, and again, not locking the board into anything, so we can certainly amend this. If we see another event come up that is more pressing, that fits within the guidelines, we could amend it, this isn't like setting our budget. With Jake, so if we can get some agreement on the categories and the purposes. The board's comfortable with some of the allocation of dollars, understanding we still haven't allocated all of it. Then we can move forward on some things that we need to move forward on now, that's the goal.
A couple of these, these were put out for bid by these guys, and some of them are thirty days, I think some of them are sixty days or whatever, but we've got the bids back on it. So that's, I mean, if there is a chance to move forward, that's why.
Yeah, I don't think that's a problem.
Yeah, you, yeah, don't see an issue with that, so, so let's, but from a board standpoint, or certainly any of the electeds or anybody here. I mean, from a category standpoint, project, Steve. I mean, you're getting a pretty good chunk uh for conservation, and I I the the reason I kind of looked at it that way. At least these three projects, I'll give you my rationale, you tell me if I'm in the ballpark. I, the cabins are great facilities for Marion County, in terms of attracting people to come here. So as we've talked over the years, anytime you can update those cabins, get new cabins that fits into that tourism bucket. And I saw the septic part of that is being associated with all of that, um the cabins being able to function, be updated. Modern, et cetera, uh good for us, good for the park, good for tourism.
Not to mention, it's a revenue generator.
Not to mention, it generates quite a bit of revenue, uh the most that we get, uh when we say revenue, is that, is that fair, is that a fair?
Yeah, that's, like, I I sent you an email, kind of updating some of those figures, cause I'm kind of on the other end of what Jason was talking about. Where those would be probably a year out, where the cost may change, that's why I tried to update that figure for you, make make it more realistic.
What was that, what was that final figure, Steve, do you remember?
Uh for the total, for the cabins total?
Of those, of those three, but what did that come out to be in the, in a revised number, I don't remember.
Revised, it would have been uh one million four hundred twenty five.
Okay, so an additional.
For three, yeah, about three hundred, that's what, what you have to take into account is the location of those cabins. How much earthwork you have to do, where the sanitary system is gonna be, how that hooks into the lagoon system, and that has to be approved by the core.
Sure.
So again, you're probably looking at a year out by the time you go through all that, and you have design work to do on that. So there's a, there's a lot of other factors, it's not just the cabin itself, a lot of other stuff that goes into it.
So.
So, and who knows, a year from now, construction costs are gonna be, could be higher, could be lower.
Absolutely.
So, again, I'm kind of on the other end of Jason, um I don't have actual hard cost estimates on that. You know, at this particular point in time, but I brought that up to the Conservation Board at our last meeting, and those were the top five, cause we talked about the top five. And those were probably the 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 higher dollar items, the camp sites there, um that could be done. Next year sometime, our problem there is it probably has to be done in the fall, because we have so many reservations already for next year.
Right.
It's hard to do that project.
Sure.
I I'm just thinking out loud here, Steve, but, you know, in in a year or two, depending, like you said, depending on the cost, you may. And the cost may be insane, but this, but the scope of the project may be scaled down somewhat, maybe such three cabins, two cabins, or whatever.
Right, you could always adjust that depending on if the cost goes way up, cause originally, when we built the first three bedroom cabins, we had plans for four. But the cost came in higher than anticipated, so we built three of those with the anticipation that down the road. We would put another one in that, that location, so.
One, one of the things, and Steve, to your point, you know, I realize that some of these things probably won't happen tomorrow. We'll have some of these projects, Jason, like yours, that will be a shorter timeframe, need to get on it, and it'll depend, Chris, on quotes and. You know, the things that you get moving from that standpoint, the things that maybe are, will take longer to actually initiate. It's a little bit why I left some room at the bottom, is understanding we're going to have a plus or minus. Depending on construction costs, fuel, fuel costs, folks. I mean, that's gonna change dramatically by next year, at least if all the estimates are true that that I'm hearing about. So we, I left a little bit of room in there to say, we can, we can add, if we need to. We can pull back if we need to, we can do a different project, if we see we're not utilizing all that funds, but it gives us a reserve.
Chris, I got a question. What what is the HVAC upgrade at the courthouse, I thought we did all those mini splits and.
Yeah, that was one of my questions.
So, we installed seventy six new heat pumps during the courthouse remodel, the only thing we didn't tackle was gutting the. Third, above third floor courtroom, historic third floor courtroom, if you've ever been up in the attic, there is three condenser boiler. Systems up in that attic, um they've been added on to, all the old units from when they first installed them are still in, it's all been daisy chained together. Initial cost on that was pretty high with the contractor we had on site, um we've since revisited that. And we've come to the conclusion, what we're gonna do is gut all the old stuff out, and then just put three condensed units back in. Uh we're also gonna change the airflow design, if you've ever been in third floor courtroom, even when it's running, it's absolutely horrible. I mean, the reality of it is, you have a supply vent and a return vent sitting right on top of each other. So, if you know anything about HVAC, that's bad, um so this is redoing that portion of the building. We just never could get to it, um with everything else we had going on, especially during COVID, so that's, that's what that is right now.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just curious.
I just have a couple of comments, um conservation, yeah, I agree, I am, I'm, I'm in support of that. EMA, I I'd like to talk to Jeff a little bit more and what he means by two-way radios. Facilities, yeah, I think that that's something that we definitely need to look at, and I appreciate your explanation. Human resources, it does bring up a question to me, you know, twenty five thousand, um you know, I don't know how we're gonna go about who's designated and who's not. Um and, you know, on on the pay, and I know that there's a window that we have to look at too. Um in which we can't go clear back from the beginning of March, yeah.
January one.
Yeah, January one, is as far as back as we can go, so, and then.
The rules are very specific.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, and there's maximums, you can't go more than thirteen dollars an hour, you can't give more than X amount per employee, I mean, it's just, it's very restricted. On what you're doing here, this is a skiff, or spiff, I gotta make sure I get my language right here, to people who did stuff during COVID. That's, that's what it is.
Only, only in that timeframe.
Yep. It doesn't even go back when we actually were doing COVID.
Right.
Andrew, on yours, the IT, um obviously, I don't know what that fully entails, some of that may be, you know. And confidentiality issues, so that, you know, we're not allowing everybody to know what we're planning on, you know, but at the same point. Um I, yeah, I'm in support of making sure that we're secure, road department, I think for the taxpayer use and for the Sheriff's Department. Is, as we're seeing with fuel, um thirty fourteen east, um main project, trying to, um. You know, I kind of wanna talk to the electeds on that too, and department heads. If we were to get a tornado, and heaven forbid, um courthouse was demolished, um you know, public health, whatever. And if we had a structure that was secure enough, uh you know, and we had it so that we had room, so that you could show up to work. I think that would be something that is important, but I'd like to know what your guys' thoughts are too.
Well, it's not, I don't think it's only about the the uh for security or thing, but, you know, we we pie- we piecemealed this. Building together, and, you know, as everybody knows, we've had, we had some issues in the last couple of weeks.
I mean, the building does need, and I've talked to Chris about this, the building does need some um upgrades. Um outside wise, and the structure, um you know, and you hate to pour, you know, good money after something that's not gonna hold up.
Right, and and if you're looking at upgrading this building, you as well forget it, and you as well start from scratch, that's my opinion. And build it, and build it so you, so you do have those security features built into the building.
But I think that we need to make sure that that's, um, the, the issue is of looking at the building as a whole, and then ultimately, if we were to have a catastrophic situation, that those department heads, the people, you know, that need to, electeds could show up and have a, you know, facility. Now, law enforcement center, it has, um, you know, around your.
It has an EOC, it's built for that structure side of it. I would hope that there would be some money in there to kind of update that side of it, because that's what we use for our EOC on times of emergency.
Right.
That's why we're having the discussion.
Yeah, but I think it's, I think it's both, I, I understand, uh, upgrading this building also, or whatever, so I always just hope there'd be a kind of a compromise on maybe doing, being able to utilize both along those. Because on ours, I mean, that's, that's where we're, I mean, myself as a sheriff, I don't know what future sheriffs would do, but it's a lot easier to work with our communication centers there, all those other factors.
And it's imperative that we have the communication center, yes, yeah.
So, so those are just things that I would, I would look at, hey, how do we upgrade? How do we do both? I mean, maybe as a combination along those lines.
And I think we're looking at, you know, twenty, twenty-five years down there, we want something that's going to be able to stable, yeah, 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 and it's safer, um.
Yeah, and, and, and not everybody, to your point, unless you really expand the law center, I mean, in certain areas, which we've talked about in the past, or different things, or whatever, but not everybody's going to fit in there unless there's a huge expansion, so I understand your thought process of kind of having an area over here too. I mean, on it, but.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have enough money for that.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, I, obviously, I think that's probably an ideal situation, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and those are just future discussions, yeah, I, I, but I understand where the process or why you're kind of doing what we're doing, so.
And Steve and I talked about, I called Steve, um, yesterday about the trails, because I was trying to understand, I'm like, that is such a wonderful idea, and then as we further talk about it, we, we think of rural, you know, America versus city, and how that, I mean, some, somebody may look at it as a spreader, COVID spreader, you know, multiple people in the, on the trails type of thing, you know, and having to have a mindset of, okay, this is for nationwide, not, you know, just rural, and, uh, sometimes I appreciate your perspective on that, Steve, because I needed that. I would, you know, if there was some more guidance down the, the way, and they said, hey, you could do trails, I would love to be able to do trails too. So that's my thoughts.
You know, obviously, if, if it weren't for the fact that they were giving us money, which, which is, I, I use that term loosely, but obviously, this building, we'd probably keep on piecemealing it and getting by. I mean, but what a, what an opportune time to do something right, if they're, if, if we're going to have this money. And we got to spend it, otherwise give it back.
Somebody, yeah, somebody else is going to take it and do something with it.
Which is crazy.
Well, and I appreciate that.
I know when we discussed, um, the upgrade of the EOC, there were a lot of, of this building as an EOC building, there were a lot of different things that we touched on. In that amount, is that settled on any particular, you know, was that an infrastructure upgrade, cyber upgrades? Do we know what else in there?
Yeah, that's a great question, Michaela, so, just in talking with Chris, I, I've essentially had him redesign a brand-new building. So, as Steve alluded to, this building is kind of, although it was great for its day, it's kind of a cobbled-together location for us, the septic system, uh, we just had, what, our fourth major issue with it. And we can continue to put money into that, which I don't think is a good use of anything. So this gets us potentially onto the city septic line, uh, this building, so we don't have that issue anymore. So that's factored in there, plus it puts this building probably a smaller footprint. Uh, we don't need as big a structure as we have right now. Uh, but we can design the building in such a way so that it can withstand, uh, a lot of natural disaster issues. It can be a center that can house other electeds or other office staff, uh, in the event of a courthouse event, like Marshall County. Um, and then it's resistant to things like fire and wind and rain and all those types of, of things, it won't be pretty. Well, it'll be pretty, in its own way. Yeah, that's Chris, all right. But the point of, the point of it, Michaela, would be to have that location, and we talked about this, having extra office space built into it for other departments. So that's what it's for. And then the supervisors, obviously, in the same departments that are already out here, would probably remain, if I make a few adjustments. We are going to have a conversation with Andrew about upgrading our systems, and maybe having another location for redundancy, uh, that is a little more secure and, um, uh, disaster-resistant out here. So we, those are things that, when we look at what's happened over the last two years, if there are things that we could upgrade for, for local government, that's what we would upgrade. Those are the, those actually would be the top of my list. The other things, HVAC and that, we got to have that just to function, those are just things you got to have, and you're either going to budget for that, or you're going to take an opportunity now to spend this money and then shift your budget items to other things, or maybe save a little bit on your budget. But to upgrade our structures to meet the challenges going forward for the next twenty-five years, we don't have the money for that. We do now, and we have a shot at doing it right, so that's the way I look at it.
We, we have money to a point, I mean.
Yeah, to a point. Um, and, and again, you get into the politics of it, and every, you know, spending the money, not spending. It's sitting in a bank account right now, and we're going to get more of it. And politically, I don't like it. Because this isn't our money, it's our grandchildren's money. But.
Does anybody know what the rating is of the LEC as far as wind goes?
Chris?
Say that, uh, re- restate that question, so people can hear it.
Like tornado rating?
You gotta, you gotta use the mic.
I would say probably not very high.
Because I can't hear it.
The question was, does anybody know what the tornado rating is of the LEC?
Yes, it's a F-three is the maximum for the LEC. So, it, the LEC, the way it's constructed, when I say F-three, we're talking building as a whole. When you think about pods, and you think about where dispatch is located, that quote-unquote, according to the engineers, we did our study, is up to two hundred mile an hour winds, which are qualified as an F-five. So, the building's built, it's two separate buildings melded together, that's why it's two different ratings.
You feel safer now, thank you.
I'm surprised it's that high, I, I can understand the pod, but I can't, I'm surprised that the other one is an F-three.
Yeah, very good. Other, other discussion?
You guys have any other questions? This is a draft. I mean, I think that, you know, yep.
Yeah, that's, that's why it says draft.
Yep.
So are you guys looking like today on it? I mean, are you looking to take a vote on some of those things that you're all in agreement upon?
If, if some, if someone has agreement on something.
I mean, that's, I didn't know of, I mean, if there are certain things that you.
I mean, I'll be, I'll, I'll give you my, my, I'm trying not to just say, this is my, the, the reason it's structured this way is this is the way I think it should be distributed, okay? Otherwise, I wouldn't have put it this way. Is that fair? Since I'm kind of the author of it, I'll say, that's the way I think it should be distributed. Um, amounts can be discussed. So we could say, you know, less for this, more for that, but that's the whole reason for the contingency at the bottom, is to give us room to adjust. Or if we say Project X, two-way radios, we don't want. Fine, don't care. Uh, let's move it to something else. There are some things I do care about, I'll tell you what I care about. I think we need to upgrade this place. I think we need to take care of people who did stuff during COVID. I know conservation, it, I'm, I'm a big fan of Steve's department and what they do for Marion County. These upgrades to facilities have to be done, this is an opportunity to do that. So, those are, when I, and then the fuel project, I think I'm the one that asked Tyler to take a look at it anyway, become the fuel expert. So those are, those are the things that are on my mind, give us the best bang for our buck, fit within the rules, provide some revenue source, which would be Steve's area, but then take care of some basic infrastructure needs, we would have to budget for anyway over the next X number of years.
Yeah, we would have to look at the fuel storage issue, here regardless, whether we had the money or not.
Yeah.
But, yeah, the committee did come, bring up these ideas, and I do want to thank the committee, so, for taking the time.
Question is, it's not just because it deals with my office, but it is because it deals with my office also. I mean, that road department, the facility side of it are two things that was kind of tasked, I mean, to move forward with. The three of you said, hey, these are things we were probably going to do anyway, or needed to do. So I would ask for, I mean, a vote of at least those two, to be able to get started on them and move forward with them. I mean, that's just what I'm asking on it, and.
You know how hard it is, Jason, to, to have, you know, you know, I'm looking at some of this stuff for the first time.
Sure.
Without, without breaking open meetings at all, we can't even sit down and discuss something important.
Well, I guess, maybe.
And maybe we could make it for the agenda to approve for next, you know, and then we have some figures, you know, meeting with Chris, and whether that's something, you know, with the figures you guys have.
The, the, the point of, the point of this, Jason, I get the urgency, but you're probably going to have to wait two weeks.
Okay.
Okay? Because to be, to be, to be. I don't disagree either, but to be fair, Steve's right. I put this together so that we could have a discussion in open meeting, and then, to be fair to these two, they have to have time to digest, what does that mean? So, you, you're going to have to wait at least till the next meeting before we make a final, or at least get to the point of saying, this is what we're going to attack now.
Right, well, and, and maybe I stated that wrong, it's not that, I mean, I just want to, I, I was looking for consensus as an elected official.
And you're seeing some agreeances with this, yeah, yeah, I get that, I appreciate that.
And so instead of, I mean, those things, if there was something.
But I don't have any problem at all with the HVAC thing. I mean, you guys have already, I mean, you guys, you said Justin and, and Andrew and all the quotes, and Chris for the, the update, right? Is, now, that's a time-sensitive thing?
Well, it's, I think probably two days out now. One, one, we just looked, and we're two days out past the one, so we're going to have to redo it anyway, probably. But, I mean, those are just ones that to move forward with sometime down the road, so.
Yeah, I have no issues, I have no issues with those, I'm telling you upfront.
And then we think about what we have currently, we haven't got the other bucket, we've got the three million, and so, you know, when we expend, you know, there's going to be priorities, to me, you know, how you're going to do it, go, go in first, so, yes, I agree. HVAC is important, and let's get that done, and.
I, I just, I think there's things that we definitely have to have, I mean, there's things on the list I would like to have future discussion about. But I, I was just looking for a consensus of you three on, hey, are there ones that maybe, maybe what I'm asking is, are there priorities right now, if you had to rank them, I mean, Mark kind of did it on his side of it, on, are there other ones ranked that we can kind of knock them off, so then it's not as much discussion, you know, if, if there's a unanimous decision amongst.
Well, I don't, I, I, I get what you're saying, and there are some things, the facilities ones are obvious, Jason, okay, that's just obvious.
Road Department to me is obvious too.
The road department fuel thing is obvious, pay is obvious. Uh, conservation, there's not a thing on here we could say, well, it's not obvious, okay? The question is, do you want to expend the dollars, and what order do you want to expend the dollars? And if it's facilities first, that's fine.
I just.
But I don't want to piecemeal this, that's what I'm not a fan of. If we do approve yours first, and then we wait, then we approve the next one, and we wait. I want a framework that we can put together, because it provides a blueprint. You can edit the blueprint.
Yeah.
But if you just leave it open-ended, and we spend our, uh, facilities money at one point eight, but yet, well, we'll just leave the others out there. Well, I'm not a fan of that at all.
Yeah, I just want to be comfortable when I say yes to something that.
And I want to get time for people to give us feedback. Yep.
So, let's do this, let's do this. Uh, Jake, if you make a note, next meeting? We'll talk about this, and a step, very good, thank you. So Board, if you take the next couple of weeks, review, talk, read, and then let's come back with at least our initial, what do we think, where are we at, and let's start moving forward on whatever those first priorities are, yeah?
Do you know what the two-way radio?
I have no idea. It was just on, it was on a list.
Yep.
I would like to have future discussion about that also.
There were five items, three items on that list, one of them was for radio towers. And Jeff, Jeff's not here, so I want, I want to be fair to Jeff, I don't, I don't know what he was thinking about. I edited the radio tower stuff off, because that was like a million dollars for five radios, and we're, we're not interested in that, unless somebody here is interested in radio towers.
No, I, I'm going to have to have that explained to me.
I was just curious, we have some stuff budgeted, and we're getting quotes currently from Raycom on some other radio.
Yeah, so maybe ask, maybe ask Jeff, and if Jeff, I want to be fair to Jeff, he's not here, so, no, I don't want to assume.
Along with Tyler, I'd like to be a part of that conversation, because obviously, it's all tied in to the PSAP, or how we do that, or different things, so. Yeah, I, I don't know what he's looking at either, and out of fairness to Jeff, but I would like to be a part of that discussion.
Sure, absolutely, that's the point of kind of putting this out there, absolutely.
I got it.
And if there's something else that's not on here.
Yeah.
If, at, in the, in the next two weeks, think of it, and make an argument for it, that it's, that it's worth spending money on. That's really the point of it, okay?
Can you give me a short version, Andrew, what, what that IAT disaster recovery is?
Yeah, this is something that we talked about a little bit in the committee. Um, basically, we do have a, um, a partial plan right now for disaster recovery, and, um, the location that that is in right now is, is just not fully, um, fully fleshed out. Uh, we could do some things in a disaster, but we could not, uh, there are some other things that we would really struggle with.
So it's not necessarily a disaster that we went through, that, that we're being proactive?
This is a proactive, yes. Yeah, it's, it's building out our DR, um, resources to be able to run IT resource, basically function as a, as a government entity in a disaster.
Okay, you explained it to me, that's all I needed to know, thank you.
Very good. Any other questions on the draft? All right, give it some thought, Board, give it some thought, read, research, talk. Two weeks, Jake, we'll revisit this, and maybe try to get some initial things done, agree to a framework. The, the thing I would like is I want a document drafted from a compliance standpoint, so we have the document in place for our auditing purposes. And that's really one of the primary issues behind this. Again, the projects and the amounts can change, the framework, I don't want it to change that much, so that when we get it set, we get it set.
I think your, um, your plan for structuring it like I would did on that, that is, um, is really good. Uh, it's also being suggested that you do like a formal county resolution.
That's, that's the plan, Jake.
That would be the same document.
Yep, that's the plan.
That's, that's, and that kind of lays it out, and then Keisha was referring, I think the reports are quarterly expense reports for like, if stuff has been expended, if projects have actually started, so I don't think like, January thirty, whatever the end of January is for that first quarterly report, isn't requiring you to define everything, but it's if we have expended anything, it's that, it's an expense report.
Thank you for that, Karen.
You got the quarterly thing, Jay?
It starts quarterly, when they finalize it, but they pushed it back, it was supposed to be the end of October, I believe. Thankfully, they pushed it back to the end of January.
Yeah. Very good, we'll revisit this at our next meeting. Is there a motion to close discussion?
Make motion to close discussion.
Unless anybody else got anything to say.
Thanks for all this.
You bet.
No.
Yeah, I second.
Uh, Johnor?
Hi.
Luke Holmes?
Hi.
Raimi?
Hi, very good. Updates? Steve?
Uh, well, I got a heard a meeting this week, that's about it.
All right, Keisha?
Uh, planning and zoning last night, Antella, um, Fifth Judicial, uh, on Wednesday. As of yesterday, I believe, Chris, is Impact moved out? For the Sixth Street?
It sure looks like it.
Okay, all right, they are still providing services in Marion County, um, that they just don't have an onsite location, so.
Can you expound on that?
So, I do appreciate that, Chris, thank you, so that's all I have at this point.
Very good. Uh, I've got, uh, Board of Health today, and cross-region. Drumroll, please. Speaking of cross-region, more money, more lists to talk about. What you're seeing in front of you is in our la, and I alluded to this in our last. What you're seeing in front of you is in our la, and I alluded to this in our last meeting. The Cross Region, um, as a result of changes to Iowa law. Is going to have to figure out how to expend a little over one point one million dollars. If we don't, that money reverts to the state. They're already going to get one point nine million of our budget. As a result of the changes, that the state is essentially administering mental health now. So from the regional perspective, the boards will still be in place. They will act as the operational boards, everything will be approved by the state. The money will flow from taxpayers to the state, back to the regions, so it'll be an ever efficient process. I gotta be careful, alright. The, in our last crossboard meeting, we were sitting and trying to figure out what to do with the one point one million. We have multiple counties, we have seven counties. Tiff, are you on? For Rachel?
Yep, yep, I'm here.
We got, we got seven total, I think?
Yeah, there's seven counties.
Yeah, seven counties. So my, my proposal, after we were trying to sit down and figure out what to do, because we need to come up with a plan by the end of the calendar year for this money. Alright, so that's not a lot of time to figure this out. Was just to divide it equally among all seven counties. Say, you each get um roughly a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to spend. At our meeting today, this afternoon, all of the counties of the region are gonna come with their ideas for how they could spend that money. There will probably be some that don't spend sixty thousand of it. There'll be some that spend all of it. We actually approved. One project for, I think it was Ringled, Tiff, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, uh, for Telomet. For their, for their county. And they'll get a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars to help with rural Telomet in their county, which is, I, I think it'll be great for them. This list of projects, Tiffany, I asked Tiffany and Rachel to get together and figure out. Just high level, what are some of the things that we could use this money for? And that hundred and sixty-five thousand, actually for Marion County, could end up being more. Because some of the counties may not be able to spend it all, so just understand that now going into it. So the whole point of showing you this list right now is really not to have a discussion about it. Is to say, I'm going to have a meeting this afternoon where the other counties are gonna present their lists. And we're gonna come up with some kind of finalized way in the Cross Region to say. This is what we wanna spend the money on, and here's your general allocation in each county. Then we'll probably come back here and say, what do we wanna spend it on? Alright? But this gives us a rough outline of some different projects. There may be some on there we want, maybe some on there we, we don't want. Tiffany, maybe just high level, since I had you do this.
What was that, Mark? I'm sorry.
The, 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 the ones that are highlighted versus the ones that are.
That are highlighted are, um, either we heard back or are, or are additional, and so. Pella Regional Health Center, I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory on the list what they would be requesting. Um, as well as first resources, and then law enforcement, social worker looking at possibly um an embedded social work. Social worker um as a pilot project, and then with law enforcement, and then. Mental health awareness and resource campaign, just um advertising um throughout Marion County with billboards. Um, and there would, there would be a rotation, and the information, there would be access center information. Um, CH C S I services, Your Life Iowa, and Bring Help Now. And then Marion County Nonprofit Project, looking at how can we encompass mental health, substance abuse, public health, behavioral health, like all under one. Really, essentially, so.
Okay, and Tiff, just a second, um, Tiff, on the eighty thousand, that would not be replacing anybody, but that'd be an additional.
No, it would be additional.
Yeah, okay.
What was your question?
Talking about the social worker, that would be something that I, you know, wanna make sure that everybody understands, that would never be a replacement. That's imperative that we have, you know, our Sheriff's Department, our cops. Um, this would be something that I know other counties are using because our law enforcement has to deal with so much social work aspect.
Okay, how do, my question to that is, is that, is that a, the money, is that a new hire? I mean, how do you fund a social worker? In per, in perpetuity?
It's, it's a pilot program, so that was just an option. This is, this is just.
It would be, it would, it would be a new hire.
Yes, but it would also be.
So how do you fund it in perpetuity?
That would be the question.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that would be a question as well. Uh, Rachel and I discussed that as well, so with it being a pilot project. Um, to see how things go, if it's beneficial, if it's not beneficial, you know, and planning forward, what that would look like as far as. The salary goes and benefits. Um, I know, um, Wapalo County, um, they have. A social worker embedded, and then I know in Marshall, Marshall County, they also have one embedded, and so. Um, I'm not exactly sure, as far as Marshall towns go, I know that they, um, it's through Y S S, but. The Southern Iowa Mental Health Center, um, they are employed by them, and then they have an office based out of the Law Enforcement Center. They're in Tamla. And, let's see, I believe.
That's salary and benefits, I'm assuming you're combining the eighty thousand.
Yes.
Yeah. So, Tiff, I'm gonna just jump in here real quick, because.
Go for it.
Again, this list is merely to give us some examples. Uh, what, what we're, what we're gonna do, what we're gonna do this afternoon in our crossboard meeting is the other counties, I know Rachel has been getting information. From the other member counties on projects. And the fact that I just came up with this idea at our last crossboard meeting is I was just looking at the numbers, trying to figure out how do we. Keep this money from reverting back to the state, but it's our taxpayer money, now we get some of it back. What we may end up doing in the cross meeting is saying, look, if you've got projects and you can get a rough allocation of, let's say. You can spend sixty thousand, we'll grant you sixty thousand, and you have to spend it. And then account for those projects that they are truly for mental health purposes. So they turn out being more of a bucket of money. But we'll have to spend it by a certain period of time, and then it'll have to be for mental health, otherwise that money will revert to the state. It will remain in the Cross Region, so it's not like this money's coming back to, to fund tan, and it's now under county control, it's just being reallocated. For direct county services. So, I understand that's the concept.
Something else Rachel wanted me to also say, if you guys wanted to prioritize this list of the board supervisors, and then just to note that. Um, if through the course of an audit, that it's determined that. Um, these expenditures are not seen as mental health expenditures, the county is on the hook to pay them back. So it'd be Marion County.
Yep.
Um, so just.
Yep, no, and I, and that's a great, that's a great thing, Tiffany. That's why it's so important that when we think of this stuff, just like with our last discussion. It's gotta relate to mental health. It can't be for some, and I don't wanna even color close to the line. Because our taxpayers have already been taxed for this. And so if it's something for mental health, then let's make sure we apply it to that. It's one-time money, we're not gonna get any more. In this regard, because the state has restructured mental health, and they will be running it and budgeting for it with our money. Uh, let's see how they do. Alright? Questions? Alright, so take a look at this. The whole reason for this is so everybody has an eye on what we're thinking about. Uh, Jake, two weeks, I'll have more information from our cross meeting today. On what the other counties come up with and what those, what the money looks like. I think we have enough projects in Marion County, we could certainly spend a hundred and sixty-five thousand. But if it turns out that there's actually four hundred thousand left for us, I'm probably gonna come back and say, how do we spend four hundred? Because I want it to come back to us. I don't want it reverting to the state, alright?
And, and those that are like the nonprofit, I'm assuming Tiffany, we'd have to make sure that um we have Jake or whoever, I guess it would be the Cross Region, sorry, it wouldn't be Jake. That they have proper um documentation, that they are nonprofit, so we will, we would need that too.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Tiffany?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
Alright, very good. Those are my updates. Anything else for the good of the order?
Nothing at this point.
Alright, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make motion to adjourn.
Second?
McCombs?
Hi.
Raimi?
Hi.
Johnor?
Hi.
Very good. We are adjourned, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.